I'd like to follow meeting in order. While everybody, please, Ross. I'm the allegiance. I love the nation's physical side of the United States of America. This is a republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could you vote please? Mr. Goff, oh, here. Mr. Lee. Mr. Cherry.
Here.
Mr. Dorni. Mr. Gongoa.
Here.
Mr. Nevin said he would be arriving late. Mr. Backer.
President.
Mr. Melonowski.
Here.
Mr. Dykes.
Here.
Mr. Antonacci.
Here.
Chief Carlson.
Here.
Mr. Radico. You all received a copy of the minutes for the meeting on four seventeen twenty twenty four. What are the wishes of council?
I make voting with approval of this for the matter.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed. The motion carries. Anything for public comment?
Uh, nothing for again.
Mayor's report.
A bidding of Mr. President. Um, police call activity, about ten hundred fifty total calls. Uh, I did attach the, uh, the call report. Manor Borough had three documented cases with the magistrate, all three were criminal. Uh, just an overview of where we're at the community day. August seventeen, two thousand twenty-four is the date. Estimated outflow is approximately eighteen thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars out of the twenty thousand dollar grant. Uh, gonna be up here at the parking lot in the community group from eleven AM to six PM. In the parking lot is gonna be the American Legion Honor Guard, starting off with the pet parade. Children's games will be provided by Front Services. We're gonna have select vendors, retail vendors up here, the DJ outside, and the live vision test. Inside the community group, we have three, uh, three children events. The first one's gonna be Westwood Performing Arts Vibrations from twelve to one thirty. Jim Giannini Magic from two to four, and Pittsburgh Puppets from five PM to five forty, also the face of the evening. Uh, down in the ballpark, we have three bands lined up, starting at one PM. Going all the way to ten PM, we have Trey Slacks, Stampede, and Twisted Fate. Our stages is, uh, gonna be Manny's Mobile Stage. Our sound is gonna be, uh, produced by Master Track Productions. Ordering a generator from Cleveland Brothers. Ordering tents, tables, and chairs from Joey's Canopies. We are gonna have Pittsburgh Mother Police on site. Ford Jones will be provided by Mr. John. And, uh, I believe we have nine confirmed food, soft drink vendors. Uh, various signs will be provided by Creek Site Graphics. Uh, I am in conversation with the fire department and the library to see what they're gonna be doing. Also, court will be reserved for handicap parking. And there will be various parking looks wide and service services will be provided by Forest Speed.
Okay. Solicitors report.
So, um, last month, I was requested to look over the parking regulations with respect to, I think, the Manor Borough parking lot. Um, and when I looked at the ordinance, it's ordinance five seventy-one of two thousand two. Um, if there, the lot in Manor Borough, this one is open twenty-four hours a day for parking, the way this is written. It indicates that it's an all-day. Now, you do have provisions in this ordinance that allow any other public parking lot. After, um, the evening hours, those, um, it's a sundown, I believe, sunset, I'm sorry, not sundown. If it's sunset and thereafter, cars should not be parked in those lots. So if there are any other type of lot, they can be, you know, towed away. There's provisions that allow for that. If you guys want to do something with just this parking lot, there are provisions in this ordinance that allow for permit parking. And we could amend the ordinance to say that this also ends at sunset. And that you would have to get a permit to get one of these spots if you wanted to have certain parking there. However, if we give a permanent spot in this lot and you have some function later down the road, that permanent spot, we're not gonna be able to remove them because they're gonna pay for a permit to be there. So you have to be cognizant of, do you wanna even allow the permanent spots in your own parking lot? So I think what we should do is sit down with buildings and grounds, because this is kind of a ground issue. Figure out what you guys would recommend, and it's Dave and Chuck and Tony. Um, and then we could come back to council with a proposal of something for parking. Just think that sounds like a good idea.
That's a great idea.
Okay? And that's all I have.
Engineers report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Manor Park, the work by Dunright Construction has been completed. Completed all his work on the walking track. There's a punch list that is being developed, some things, loss ceiling, cold joints, and some high spots that he has to take a look at on the walking track. Uh, D and N Contracting, they've completed their project. We walked the, uh, the road manager and I said, we walked the project. Uh, there's a tubular curve that intersects Cameron Drive that must be replaced. It was damaged during construction. And there's some areas where they have to repair the number one stone entrance near Cameron, approximately a five by five area. Uh, the Ronald Road Street Banking Project, I spoke to, uh, the president of their reconstruction today. I'd like to schedule a meeting for next Monday, reconstruction meeting. And a joke can speak that is more than I, that I know public works, it's something preliminary. The front work on the drainage out there in the park. Um, and as far as the Oak Street Sewer's concerned, uh, the manager and myself, we met with the water company last week. Showed them the, I stayed at the location of the proposed water line, relocated water line. And, uh, that's moving forward. And that's all I have at the moment.
Okay. Is there an officer's report? The borough manager's report.
Uh, so the new backhoe was received shortly after the last council meeting, thank you again. And, uh, the, uh, Cleveland Brothers came out and did a training, uh, session for the guys, working on it real well. Update on one ninety-eight Oak Street. It was sold at Sheriff'sville on May fifth of twenty twenty-four. Um, and it was bought by the mortgage, mortgage company, which is Nation Star, Mr. Cooper. And currently, they have the house, if you go to look at it online, they have it up for auction, which ends on, uh, June seventh, twenty twenty-four. I'm not sure we're gonna have our mask, but that's the status of that. And then, um, at the request of Officer Mayor, we, uh, put the speed sign up, uh, at two-ten Cameron Drive. That's the visual sign that monitors speed, flashes, you know, if you're over the speed, speed limit. And, uh, last but not least, um, we had an incident the other day working on Ronald Road. We had a vehicle drive through the road, close signs, and, um, I'm mad because he couldn't get through. Backed up, turned around, abruptly backed into one of the public work trucks. No damage on the bed and truck, but he people had some damage. I'm gonna thank the chief here, who's pretty quick response, and actually called the guy over, and told him so. Thanks, Jesus. Yes, sir. That's all I have.
That's it. You've all received a copy of the treasurer's report. What are the wishes of council?
I have compassion with Will, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. You've all received a copy of the tax collector's report. What are the wishes of council?
Second.
What, a second?
I'll second it.
Top. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Committee reports, buildings and properties.
Well, um, actually, probably a few things we can bring up later in the agenda. And, uh, we should set up a meeting about this parking situation now. Probably have to solve for, uh, the next meeting, the next ten days. Get our recommendation in writing, send over to council in a few weeks, before the meeting takes its place.
And by the way, you can, the way the ordinance is written is we can adopt it via resolution, any amendments to the parking regulations, so you know. So we don't have to advertise as an ordinance.
When we discuss this, do you wish to be heard?
If you want me to, just for drafting purposes, or you can email me afterwards and say, this is what we want. And then if I have questions, I can.
Just my thoughts. Probably won't be much more than a paragraph or two.
Okay.
If it makes sense, you know, when we're done.
Email me, and then if I have questions, I'll email you with that.
Give it that date.
Good.
Okay, perfect.
Um, I have a question. So, I think we went a little, we had the sound system there, we changed some, um, meetings. Has anybody given any thought about the sound system again?
I have, I have.
I have the, we have a bid ready to go to be advertised.
Is there anybody we can have Chuck and Dave take a look at that?
Sure, I can email.
Because we've been talking about this for a while.
Yeah, so I'll email you the bids tomorrow, that, that be drafted. So you can review it and see if there's anything else that you make sure to be in it.
I believe you guys already voted to have the solicitor proceed, and it was gonna go out the bid, you were just waiting. You did go out the bid initially because you were waiting for other, any public comments, who may or may not have dropped on it, you didn't receive any. So, and you had previously already voted to have it out the bid, but it out the bid.
Do we need more, do we need more, and at all, any additional public comment on this issue?
I don't think you do. I think the bid is sufficient. And then, the way it's written in the sense is, we have certain provisions or types of, um, materials that we want, a brand, but we also say incompatible. Because, so it's kind of, I don't know that there's anything more that you can put in there. I think we just need to get it out there and get it advertising, move on.
Well, since this was done before our, I was committee, I'm not sure, I got it at a previous meeting or not. But, uh, do we have these state requirements of what we're supposed to have?
So, are you talking about like ADA requirements and things like that? Yes, so there's actually a provision, there's additional, um, equipment that we've suggested in the bid, like, um, microphones and things like that. However, and, but, or incompatible. So it's something that we are, we address ADA in there, and we want ADA, uh, to be satisfied. But they might come up with, you know, somebody might come up with something more clever than what I know about. And they might say, this might be a better way for hearing impaired to give this information. So, it's written in a way that we could really get any type of scope. We say, this is what we want, at the very least, and then they can provide more.
If I remember right, there was, um, not for better word, receivers and, uh, microphones and speakers and all that. Um, while we're at it, should we not look at maybe another setup here? Doesn't have to stand in the way of this. If we're running wires, we're doing anything like that.
Well, I think that's a different, we didn't absolutely have that conversation. Obviously, that, that would be the two of you spearheading, but, I mean, we can have a conversation.
I thought we did that already, when you rolled out the, the wire system, just because of the nature of, I don't know if Chuck said.
Is there a receiver, something has to be there?
Oh, sorry, Chuck, what?
Receiver or something in the roof.
The way this was, I think, looked at, the equipment would be in, um, the storage closet there where the tables are. The microphones would all be wireless.
And then there would be something, what, in the ceiling, correct?
There'd be speakers in the ceilings. I'm trying to look through to see exactly what it's called.
That would include making the podium hot?
Yes. Then have a microphone.
Yes.
podium, which one?
Sorry, I couldn't walk, because we talked about it, so I haven't.
Seven. Could I get a question?
Go ahead, Joe.
Has anybody looked at ADA accessible bathroom?
We talked about it, but, um, what we're gonna need is, uh, the, sorry, yeah, access. Uh, we still have the park shut down?
Yes.
So we can't bring anybody in? This bathroom down here still locked?
It was never locked.
Are we still running on the prime?
Yeah, because we, because you remember, it was a while before we got the software, and then we dealt with the police thing, and then we had the park closed. Anyway, so I didn't even attempt to get on and try to program that, because it's not as simple as it would seem with that.
Do your computer screen has that one page on it, that you can just click a few things? Do you get to that point, it is difficult?
Yeah, I had to call them when we did the police station to walk us through. Because we had to go over those pass codes and stuff.
If the police station was that locked, you go with that.
Absolutely, so.
I mean, it, the park is closed to the public, so if you needed to get on there with contractors, something, that's possible, there's somebody to look at.
Yeah, I think if, uh, the reality is, um, with that part, that bathroom being open, and all this other work going on down there, these bathrooms probably should be really finalized soon.
Are you still looking at adding a second bathroom, or are you still looking at?
I think, when I remember our conversation from the last meeting about the confusion of the new one replacing the old one and all of that, I've come to what I believe was, we're still gonna keep two bathrooms.
Two separate facilities.
Two buildings, yes. And we're gonna take the, um, attempt to make the existing building, two stalls, each handicap accessible. And we wanna put another one on top of the upper end of the park, somewhere up there. And that was that, the all-matter building. The moment we got to hundred and fifty thousand. So, we got contractors going down. The other issue is, again, we're still gonna have to do the same thing like Ed does. We just gotta get it closed, keep that information close to the vest. It's still gonna have to go up a bit.
Can I make a suggestion? Um, you might want to, Mr. Antonacci, look at possible sites in the park for a second bathroom. We would be able to, you know, with as far as utilities and things like that, and making it, uh, accessible. Depending on where you're, where you're looking at over there, you may say, we think it's great, let's put it here, it's gonna work. And Ed goes out and gets his little robot, and he looks and says, no, it's too steep, we can't do it.
Yep. No doubt. No doubt. Well, we have, that building has to either be flat on the ground, so no one has to walk, or we have to put a ramp up, with a rail around it.
Right. We've gotta look at the best possible site to do that. Anything else? Okay. Community better make parks unravel.
I have, I have two, I have a ticket, if you want to be on the record.
Okay. Oh, okay. Make sure we turn those on. Personnel and finance?
Well, we were supposed to have a public works contract meeting on Friday, and, uh, the union rep had it canceled at the last minute, so it'll probably be sometime in June.
Anything else?
Nope.
Community outreach and communication. Um, I'm not sure what they've been doing, seeing how both of them are out. I know we've kind of put the, the junior council program on the back burner with a couple things that have happened, that I've had to deal with. Don's been sick, I don't know if anybody has heard that, so she's not been available. So, a bit of a setback, we might have to try for next year. So, but other than that, that's, that's what we're gonna do.
Planning and zoning?
Um, the planning commission met Monday night. Um, we have, uh, PT Court has returned. Uh, PT, PT Court is changing their plan. And significantly, uh, not so much on the Manor Borough side as the, the Penn Township side. But what they've done to make the changes, uh, made them put another building on our side. Uh, we went over a lot of different issues with them, uh, and sent most of them back, um, requesting that they submit some additional information. So at next month's meeting, uh, we should be able to go through that. But because, again, you're talking about stack prints, we ask that they do that extremely fast. So that you should get copies of what we see the Monday before we come here. And, uh, you have time to review it, because there's a lot there. And we'll give you time, a few weeks, let's hope, to get that ready. And then if it is something, uh, we talked about time schedules, next month is pushing it, we may have to wait till July.
They're gonna be submitting updated drawings, Chuck?
Uh, the drawings aren't bad, there was issues of, uh, parking, uh, there was issues that, uh, they had to deal with, but it's not. We can get all of this. Uh, the other one that returned was, uh, Sandywood, uh, lots eleven and twelve. The consideration, uh, uh, that's one that has the detention pond in the backyard of both of them.
Correct.
Um, the representative that came in, I think, wasn't really aware of how the last meeting ended. So what we did was, we made a motion to, for them, we gave them a list of things to do, such as, let me say it this way. Our solicitor can find out probably all the information that we want from them. But it really doesn't make a lot of sense to do that, it's number one, gonna have to page this, we're gonna. Two is, the other one submitting, bringing in, that's typical and normal. And we're looking at things like the, um, plans that were recorded that showed, uh, that there was, uh, not a dedication, there are plenty, there are some thoughts there was a dedication. It's green space now, and build residential in there, they wanna turn that back to residential. Uh, there's issues of right of ways to that pond, there's sewer lines on the other side of the other lot. Um, and everything, and including, we asked for, uh, tax records, if they did pay taxes on those lots to help prove they owned it. Um, they're willing to do all that, and we told them before they come for another meeting, to submit that to the solicitor for review. When she's done with that review, she will get over to the chairman and, uh, make a recommendation necessary to get back on the agenda. And they can come back and mend, so if they get it to us quickly, uh, same as PT Court, where you get it in quicker to be processed. The other ones, I'm sorry, I said about PT Court, those are supposed to be sent ahead, the issues we put out there. So, we're basically pushing it to our professionals, and when they tell us to move forward, we move forward then.
Chuck, are they gonna submit a subdivision application for Sandywood lots?
I think.
They don't want to.
Yeah.
They wanna believe what's there is gone. And they believe that they owned it, but see, here's where our problem comes.
Two years, two years ago, when they came in, we looked at this. And yes, there's a recorded right-of-way disposal of retention pond, and there's the easement for retention ponds. But we couldn't find anything that ever showed, the retention pond property was parceled out of those two lots.
Exactly.
Two big lots, and then it was either, uh, twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve, we gotta do a comprehensive zoning change for the floodplain map update. They made that change to grades mix now. And they had, they had submitted a subdivision application two years ago.
Yep. And they, and their problem then was the same thing, is that the engineer, uh, has put a property line, not so bad, just the application for subdivision, parcel off that detention pond. But instead drew the line in a fashion that as soon as you get to the property line that he drew, you fall into the detention pond. So if there's no boundary there, there's no way for the, what you're doing now in maintenance. Uh, that was dated, that line, the drawing that came out with that line was dated in, uh, I believe, March of twenty twenty-two.
Correct. And they agreed to move that boundary line so the detention pond could be maintained.
That hasn't been done.
No, it hasn't been done.
All we're asking for is a simple thing. Anyone who comes through the door, we have a list of retirements. And we're just saying, please, follow those retirements, because we can't at planning pass something to you. And then have the, what's the engineer supposed to do? He knows it's wrong, but the planning commission told him to do it anyway. We don't do that. When the engineer or solicitor says it's legally and engineered correctly, then we take them home. And until that point, we can't. So, uh, the, uh, representative that was there Monday night, I think she understood it. I just think there may also be an information disconnect, or disconnect between our reply. So if they can fix that, uh, Chelsea gave out our contact information to her. Said if you have any questions before, you know, trying to resubmit to court, get her the information to link it up. Same way with PT Court did. Okay.
Um, the other thing is too, um, the issue with ownership, because technically speaking, I don't know that they own property if they dedicated it with those detention ponds to us. I mean, so it depends, and that's what they need to reflect to us.
Yeah, the last season, Chuck, I said the same thing.
What are your other issues?
Probably ownership.
Could have gone, to me, hearing this, the ownership is of Manor Borough. Because those properties were dedicated with the detention pond, although there's a lot of land in addition to the detention ponds. But they dedicated the entire lots. They didn't delineate just this meets and bounds of the detention pond, they only, they said the detention pond on these lots, eleven and twelve. So, that includes all the meets and bounds of eleven and twelve. But if they could show us something different, I'd be happy to say, yes, you own it, you can subdivide it. And I think they have to do really two reverse, uh, or reverse subdivision, too. You wanna divide off to one, and then combine to two. Because the lots aren't that large, otherwise, you'd build anything, you know, because of the detention pond.
We have, despite how weird that was, I think it is, but, um, the first development for the community, it didn't originally lay out the plan and built phase one. These two lots are the end of phase one. They then sold the rest of the development, or transferred, however they did it, back to a name you may know, Manor Development. They came in and finished that, and it's up to the more common name you do. At that time, that group stated that we bought, we bought all rights and interest from the first company. When they took over the rest of that plant, when they did that, that would have included anything and everything. Manor Development said that we dedicated everything that was not a owned lot by a buyer, typical and normal. And so they don't believe there's an issue for them. They don't, you know, they believe it should have been part of the group that dedicated. And so they don't believe there's an issue for them. They don't, you know, they believe it should have been part of the dedication to Manor Borough. When they got sewers, roads, and how to manage it. But they got the, Manor Borough got the roads, stormwater, and stormwater includes that detention pond. And I'm not sure that back then, Mr. Camfield was here, I can't imagine Mr. Camfield would have not thought that we got the entire eleven and twelve. But again.
I believe that's what the thought was then Chuck, because it wasn't that many years ago when we finally got those detention ponds officially dedicated to us, because even the one on the other face, it sits down on a return bike.
Well Bonnie, at the meeting, she indicated, I can't remember what month Bonnie, but it was in two thousand seventeen. There was a discussion on it, on the meeting minutes about adopting an ordinance for those, the detention pond. And yet she couldn't find anything else in meeting minutes thereafter that the ordinance was actually adopted. And I just haven't had an opportunity to look at it.
So we just want on our end, just to clean it up so that it comes through clean. But there's, no matter how it turns out, if we miss something in the past, we'll fix it. You know, we, everybody has, we can move on. But I don't want to do anything that's going to lead us in a position to a year from now, or ten years from now, seventy-seven. The last thing for them is, I have two things.
You said last thing Chuck.
Did I say the last one? Can I have three last things then? This is the working order of the zoning ordinance stuff. It's now in the, on, we very much appreciate it, but glad we're not doing where it is now, where it has to be now. Make sure that everything has been done in there, all the blank things we finished at the last meeting. The board said, let's just stay here, plot through and finish.
It's not done.
And now we're to the point where it can be printed soon. And we'll be only waiting for next Monday for next meeting for Mr. Ingennochi's review. It's going to be sent out to the county and you also should get copies of it and have enough time to read it. You can comment on it at the next meeting, so it should be on the agenda. Looking for probably final rules of it in July.
So there are, so what we're doing is that I have, I'm waiting for some comments from the planning commission. It's pretty, pretty much done as Mr. Cherry indicated. At next planning commission meeting, we can distribute it to Ed and I think Jason Craybacher should review it as a zoning officer from, you know, zoning permitting and things like that. If there's something else that he thinks should be identified as a, something that should be permitted that we missed or something. And then we also, like the last time, when we adopted, amended the CBD section, we have to go through, we don't have to send out notices, we just have to post, but we have to do the same requirements. But I'll work with Joe about those postings and everything else and we have to advertise appropriately as well. So I'm anticipating it might probably be August meeting that we actually have a public hearing on the matter. Because we have to wait for the county to give back your recommendations or changes. And because we're adopting a totally new comprehensive zoning ordinance, there might be a lot of changes or, you know, comments from the county that we might have to take back to the planning commission. So I want you all to know that, but we're close. We've gotten very close.
We're, I guess you could look at it as a planning commission, we're done. But we're not done when those other reviews come back or something. But I must say, we've had two attorneys do this. And the first attorney did his job. Chelsea has been doing some bulk of it. And we're kind of really proud she's here because she really banged it out. It's okay, she's done.
Yeah, well, and there'll be all types of requirements. We'll eventually have to have a motion for advertising, things like that. So we'll have all, go through that process.
Okay, now one real last thing. It's two parts, it's a lot. We're confused about a couple of things that administration wants. Bonnie, our secretary, had a few questions and issues. One is that she was unable to get sent by computer documents that need to be printed out for one of the members who doesn't have email. But she had asked she would always come here and pick them up. We thought that would still work. So is that an issue still? Are we okay?
Oh, I just think that's something Joe and I can talk about.
Chuck, I haven't had any requests for any documents to be printed. I mean, somebody needs something printed.
It was several months ago, I had asked you to print out something. I don't know what it was. And to call Patty and Frank when it was done to let them know. And you just said for me to call. That's all it was. That's all.
Okay, but regardless, I don't think it's an issue today. I just want to make sure that that path is open, that if we have to do that, no problem, Joe. And the other second part of that was, Mr. Ingennochi, as our engineer has line item for his expenses to plan, adds of our being the most current of our budget, he's only used up sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents, something like that.
Yeah, I believe it's a little more.
And we each.
Once he gets the zoning ordinance to review, it's going to be funny.
A slow reader.
He's a slow reader.
You know, this, I forgot my glasses. It'll take me a while. The idea just really isn't.
I can email it to you and it can read it to you if you want. It does a lot of function.
I want to be able to know that since we have a line item on the engineer, we'll make sure that we're trying to keep him on budget.
I would suggest you ask him how many hours he's going to.
But I don't, I don't want it to happen to be very worried about budget restraints or anything like that.
I zipped out of that meeting real fast.
Sorry?
I zipped out of that meeting real fast, Chell, there. I got chased parking lot by this solicitor.
Before you said that, Tim, you better ask him how many hours he's going to have.
Well, I look at it this way, two things can happen. One, we can keep him under budget. However, if we go a little over, I spoke to our finance chairman when we were doing the budget and back in December, and he said, don't worry, if it's for all that you're doing in plan, uh, we'll find it. So if we go over and don't worry about it, it's a finance, he'll find it, but we got to get the work done.
Thank you.
You're welcome. With that, I'm. Thank you.
Yep. Public safety and public works.
I did not get anything more, but on my last notes from the last meeting, that Joe had said the Penn Township is going to be adopting it.
Yeah, they did.
They did. I haven't received it. I didn't see it.
It's not, I mean, it won't take effect till next year either.
All right, so what we can do, was it there? There's another business of the county that we're going to. They don't, okay. So it's all starting in now.
All right, whole business. Discussion and deliberation and or official action on appointing a third-party code inspection and permitting service entity for both residential and non-residential activities regulated by the UCC. What are the wishes of council?
We, we want to make a motion to advertise the position or the opening. We've done it before. We have that from a while back. It's, of course, been a while. It's been stale. We have additional requests to get involved. And I think to once again, make sure that we've not found ourselves taking others out of the opportunity. Just need to advertise again.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any comments or questions?
I got a question. So we also discussed with meeting with BIU, the current inspector. Emails went out, or we talked about dates, when are we going to do that?
I don't think we should meet with any applicant until we've passed our deadline on that advertising. Even though we know the company, we know the people involved, I think to be an open government, we need to make sure.
I'm not sure, and that's what the three of us talked about that day.
Oh, I did, I did. I've been, that's why I requested that day, that we do this advertising is I don't want to be in a position later that someone can come along and say, you cut us out. We didn't have the opportunity to bid anything, because it's been quite some time since the last bid.
It's been almost a year.
So right, so this is just, it is a formality, but if someone else shows up, so be it, we meet them all in the same criteria, same setup.
Any other questions or comments? Any further comments or questions?
So this, this is the last time we're doing this though, right?
Correct.
We're making a decision because now we're just throwing more money at this. So, and but you said over a year, Chuck, is that right?
I think it's been a year. It was March, a year, I believe.
We need to figure this out.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. New business. Discussion and or deliberation and or official action on authorizing the solicitor to draft and advertise an ordinance for restrictive license agreements for tax parcel IDs. Nineteen dash zero one dash eleven dash zero dash one four six. Same set, one four five, same set, one four four, and same set, one four three. What are the wishes of council?
This is for the properties with Cameron Drive, Storm Sword project that have sheds, swing sets, whatever on Borough property. That you can stop.
To allow it.
To allow them to keep it there under a licensing agreement.
I'll second it. Any comments or questions?
Just one. Does that put us in any position as a precedent? That if anyone else with anything else in Borough property uses that to say, I want to do it to you?
You guys have done it in the past, denied it in the past. And so I, it goes by, I would take the position as a case by case basis.
We've okayed it with deny.
Yeah, so I, I wouldn't say that you have a past practice in the sense of that, you know, it's case by case, each individual, why you have something in Manor Property, that why it needs to stay there, explain the reason. If council so desires to agree with you, we can do the license agreement. Otherwise, we can do a trespass action. You know, so you can go either way.
Can we revoke the license once we've agreed?
Yes, they're revocable licenses. And in fact, if they should move, the items, because they're generally, it's nothing that's permitted in a sense. They have to be remissed. And it's, it swings out the shit. Yeah, yeah. And in fact, these things will be recorded, so should anyone purchase these properties, they, those recordings will be part of the title search. Any mortgage company would require that.
They have to remove them though?
I'm sorry? Yeah, they have to remove them.
The licensing, it would have now, after we move it.
Correct. Correct.
So the license is in the name of the current owner and is not transferred to the new buyer?
Correct.
It doesn't go with the land.
It doesn't follow the land. So once you're out.
Kind of position are we in that that happens and there's a value with automatic, they do go in for them, they can sell that.
Correct. And that will do public records, so you can't sell that shed. You can move the shed onto your property and sell it with your property in the future, but you can't say that's part of the sale. It'll, the title search will reflect that.
And do we get a look at the actual license paper or?
Yeah, I already, actually, there are a couple of them were signed. We have them signed from, some of them from last month. I have a couple more for this month to be executed. But again, we have a document that we recorded in the recorder deeds. We also have a memorandum of understanding that will stay here that's attached to the license agreement at the recorder deeds. It sets forth.
Can we just report the memorandum, right?
Yes, the memorandum.
The licensing then is.
Memorandum, I had it backwards, but nevertheless, we have it, but we attach them to it anyway, so it doesn't matter. All the rights are preserved. Again, it's non-transferable. It asks if you're removed, if you should move. They actually would be paying the recording costs of it as well. So, and again, you've done this in the past with other residents and you've also rejected people in the past for certain reasons of why you wouldn't allow for it. Probably safety issues, if something was too large, so you couldn't allow for that item to be in, you know, the easement to get around to to satisfy or like maintaining the stormwater pond or something. I just don't know. I wasn't here, but.
Let me ask that, you said possibly sheds, even fences, in the event, what's under them? Sanctuary sewers?
It's a stormwater sewer.
There's nothing under them. They're just off of, most of these ones we're talking about now are people that purchased these properties with the sheds already on volume value and where were their?
Property.
So it's Borough property, but it's not on easement. It's not having anything under the ground today.
No.
And we don't maintain it.
Well, it's our property.
It's an easement to a stormwater sewer or storm.
No, no, there's, where these sheds slash swing sets, whatever are located, is on Borough property.
That go to a stormwater.
There is, there is no stormwater line underneath them. There's no, there wouldn't be an easement for a stormwater line. So if it was on our property, the stormwater line wouldn't be an easement for your own line. So the, the stormwater line is actually on their property. Which we have an easement for.
So behind these houses, eventually there's a stormwater pond somewhere over here, behind all the houses. To access it, we often use Manor Borough property to access a stormwater detention pond. However, there's, a stormwater easement is going across the entire back of all of these properties as well. So technically speaking, even if they moved the shed probably or swing sets onto their property, it's still be an easement. Nevertheless, we're saying you can keep them on Manor Property. By the time you move, remove them? Because you don't have anything underneath, so it's not a hindrance and it's not permanent. Versus a fence that's concrete and into the ground.
When subdivision was done, completed and the dedication to Manor Borough, back there, there was no open space that was dedicated to the Borough. There was.
Or as I guessed, there was.
Okay, so let me see if I have it right. At the end of these people's property, their property line, there's an easement that might be in their property, but it's also outside of their property. So we don't have a deed for this, or do we?
The easement for.
Strictly easement then.
I think you're getting confused with our property and the easement. The easement for the storm store is on their lots. Completely on their lots. Okay? At the back of their lots is their property line. Behind that is Manor Borough property.
Yeah, I said, that's.
That's where, that's where the sheds are.
The rear property line of these properties, what's on the other side of that? Who owns the property on the other side of the lawn?
We do.
Manor Borough, that's where the sheds are.
Okay, so that was my point. So you're driving on and maintaining. Okay, so, that was my point, so you're driving on and maintaining land at the end of their property line through sub-agree, that you use it as access on manor Borough's property to get to the detention pond today?
Not where these are. There is no detention pond.
I thought it was at the end.
No, there's a, there's a, there's a storm sword outfall at the end. Which we access by going down Borough's property and staying on our property and going.
But we could go on theirs in their easement if we needed to, because we have an easement for it, that being said, they have these structures that can be removed. They're not permitted, and so-
I, I agree with the whole, the whole thing, the only thing I was trying to get to was, I've got developments and you draw property lines. Somebody owns this size, somebody owns that size.
Right.
No matter where that easement is, it's an easement, it's not ownership of the land, it's an easement.
You're correct.
So, my question was only, from this line of the rear property line of the, uh, all the owners, there is an easement on their side of the line because of access for stormwater, on the other side of that line is manor Borough owned property. So, the developer just, it's in the wrong place, he should put it on manor Borough's side. But, okay, so we're actually, uh, dealing with them on manor Borough property. Okay?
Any other comments?
Yeah, because it is, well, it's advertising, it's just for advertising.
All right, any further comments or questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Discussion and deliberation and/or official action on accepting the resignation of Shannon Malonowski from the recreation board. What are the wishes of council?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any comments or questions?
Tony.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
One comment, Mr. President, if I may, that, uh, a resignation like that, we keep that on file?
Uh, yeah.
And from reading the resignation-
Tony, may I interrupt, please? I just have something to say, and I have to say it.
Hold on, hold on, listen, just so everybody's aware, we've had some problems with people in the past-
I know.
-speaking out, right, so, I made it clear during our workshop that this was no longer going to happen, because I can't. Everybody gets a three minutes, okay? That's why I was going, she said, I'm not trying to be mean.
No, I understand that, I just want to commend Shannon for the great job she did.
But, and we appreciate that.
Okay, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
But that's why I can't do this anymore.
No, I understand.
So, all right, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I understand.
One apple sometimes, you know what I mean?
Was that reflected in the meeting minutes?
Uh, I, I think I was just speaking from the heart at that point.
Because that makes the power look bad.
So, Tony, my point was that, uh, as a recorded document, and as we all meet it, my name appears in that resignation, and for that reason, I would like to submit documentation to go in the file with that resignation.
While you're doing this, can I-
I'll please.
Discussion and deliberation and/or official action on payment request from Dunn Wright Construction. What are the wishes of council? Discussion and deliberation and/or official action on payment request from Dunn Wright Construction.
I make that very good. This is the one, this is the one, you judge, that's correct, that's the one, this is the money from DCNR on the dock.
There is storage.
And support. That's correct.
Dave made your motion.
I will second it.
Okay, any further comments or questions?
But I do have a question. You had said in your report about them having a punch list.
Correct.
Is, is this going to be, should we have this affected by that punch list and make sure that-
No, we're only holding on sixteen thousand dollar, uh, retain.
Does that cover the work if they don't do it?
Correct.
Okay, any other further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Discussion and deliberation and/or official action on payment requesting from B and M Contracting. What are the wishes of council?
Kim, Cameron Drive Storm Sword Project.
Now, there's, I'm sure there's law now.
Do you have, and do you have a retainer?
Yeah, I have a retainer. Does the retainer cover? Yes, I have one, and the final work that they have to do is some restoration, Joe and I want the, uh, road that was described in during that last conversation, and there's some work that has to be done on the camera, the curb is damaged, and some work has to be done on the access road. Grass is coming in beautifully, but I, I don't think they're really fine job, and the great work that the council is pressing.
Thank you.
Okay, Dave made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and deliberation and/or official action on payment request from Jeffrey Associates. What are the wishes of council?
I make a vote to Pam.
That was fair, that was fair.
Were we talking about both invoices?
Yes. I am, do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Any comments or questions?
Same one.
Right, same one, man.
Same one, this on the second one, uh, invoice fifty-five-three-nine-two-nine, this, line seven, Jeffrey Associates, additional consideration minus six thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars, is that a retainer, what is that?
No, that's, that was an additional discount that they applied to-
A discount from them?
From them, for the, this, that one is for the pavilion structure itself. The second one is for the concrete pad and the installation of the pavilion structure, and they are a hundred percent complete, there's no remaining items to do.
Let me ask this, I, I guess I'm lost, I, there is nineteen-nine for retainer, gable pavilion, is that the building? And the rest on the other one is labor, how, how is that?
Nineteen-nine is labor for the installation of the pavilion, and the twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty-three-three-ninety, twenty-three-five-ninety-eight is for the concrete pad, the concrete for labor for the pad.
So, I get the concrete pad, twenty-seven by thirty-eight, twenty-three-five-ninety-eight, and then there's nineteen-nine for retainer gate, so that's for labor?
Installation of the pavilion, shift gear.
And the pavilion cost was forty-five thousand? Correct. Okay, thank you.
Any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Is there any correspondence?
I don't do, sir.
I need approval to pay the bills? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Is there a need for executive session? Okay? Says some comments? Bonnie Dawson?
To Bonnie Dawson, three forty-third row. Question about the sound system, there was a comment that we were waiting for public comment, I'm just wondering, how, what is there to comment on if nobody has any information or knows that you want public comment? So, I've been following this pretty closely, it's been two years, I think, since we've been, this is a question, throw up. Nixol, what are the parameters for how ultimately Nixol works this now? How is it determined, who has access to issue them, and why are they being used? Row Road, first time I heard about this incident tonight, but Nixol working this out, maybe that could have been avoided. The weather, uh, even North Huntington sent out the tornado warnings.
So, you have to, you have to keep in mind, North Huntington has their dispatchers, which are there twenty-four seven, six days, five days near North Huntington Township, so they're the ones that put out the Nixol alert.
Yes, so if the township, who I believe has less citizens, the smaller population, they are on it, like they, they send out- So, I'm asking for, that's a huge, uh, two alert requirements. Wondering how much longer the park is going to be closed, it's been closed since the fall, school owners out, people aren't going to want to use the park. Why wasn't Ed asked months ago to find where the good place for the bathroom would be? I feel like we are wasting time, um, this council has no pro- problem spending a hundred and fifty-some thousand dollars on an excavator, a hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars on a dump truck in one council meeting, yet you guys can't figure out a bathroom that's going to cost approximately maybe a hundred and fifty thousand. And we're at like over a year now, um, and I was like, hold on, the Borough, junior Borough program, I mean, I've seen a lot about that, I think it's a great idea. However, you had said about opening it up to all of Penn Township and School District. And, I think it should be limited to manor Borough students, that if taxes are paid to manor Borough, then those students should be able to do it. And feel it's huge, um, if, if, it, it should be the taxpayer, um, tied to that address. If we do not have enough response, then sure, open it up to everyone else, but why should a kid that lives in Penn Township be on junior council here when they'd be on junior council in Penn Township? But I'm not one to limit kids' opportunities, but I think in this instance, it should be manor residents first, and then the other guy. Final word, if you want to use the park, it's time to crap or get off the pod. Thank you.
Is it a patent turn?
It is. I said politely to crap or get off the pod.
Michelle, Shannon?
Shannon.
Shannon.
I didn't want to stand and poke and knock, and I didn't want to refer to you, so I'm, I'm sorry. But, I'm here to thank you as well, I didn't realize that Cameron Drive was so popular, sorry. But, along with my neighbors, we're here to thank you for the sign. But, we do have questions about what we plan on doing to continue that awesome trend that we are seeing in the last couple months. I think we got white lines, what was that about the fall? Uh, we got lines, uh, because we got speeders on our road, and we have kids, we were trying to help them up, and we have more kids on just Cameron alone than we do people in this room, and they either go to Sunrise or to the middle school, so the median age on our block alone is ten, um, so the kids are, are main concern. And the traffic there is crazy, uh, because of mainly the plan behind us on Rainy Line. I get it, we're all busy, we're crazy, we have a thousand things to do, but speeding down our road, especially since it's such a dark road at night, is dangerous, um, we're concerned for our kids, we're concerned for our pets, we're concerned for pretty much our neighbors that walk up and down the road. So, the question is, we got the lines, we got the sign, what's next? When do we think we're going to see the sign switch, where we're-
The other volume would be there for a couple weeks, and then it'll get to somewhere else.
What about police car presence?
Yes, what will the traffic detail be next?
And I, and I appreciate everything you've done, I just, I don't, we don't think anything's going to change until they actually get the picture that you mean business.
A little bit, a little bit.
Yeah.
I don't, we don't want to be here and someone, our concern is that someone's going to get hurt and you're killed.
Yeah.
And I'm very serious about this meeting, I mean, my husband's considering buying a radar gun, because people are coming, we all, all of us live at the bottom of the road, and they're coming in over forty mile an hour.
Yeah.
And, and I feel like this, the, the sign has already worn off the threat, do you know what I mean, like, it's kind of like a game now. I feel that we need to have that traffic detail to kind of enforce that we do mean business, um, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
If you can, just thank them, please.
But we appreciate what you guys have done, I really do.
I know, I follow the school buses.
Yes, and I, I appreciate it.
I firmly believe that Mrs. Paul is a deterrent.
Absolutely.
And I am concerned-
I said, you want to meet your quota?
Come on, Cameron, come on Saturday.
I know that the school will be concluding here, and I know we're going to have, our children, they're going to be occupying the area and everything like that due to the hours changing, and I believe we're going to paint some lines, and we're going to reinforce that, and we're going to run the Accutrac. It's just been recertified and calibrated, and we're just going to wait, I mean, it's, weather's been prohibiting us from painting lines and such, like, such. So, we will be there, I'm sure, and, you know, I'll give you my cell number, I'm sorry, are you doing additional lines, because we already have lines?
Yeah, we got lines.
Right, we're, we've got to see what we have, but I don't know what's faded from last year, and I have to, so-
And you have all permission to sit in the driveway.
Matter of fact, the Borough may have been paying, so we're, we're ready. Any, anybody from council or mayor, do you have any comments to either one of those?
Well, I heard her say that it's okay to sit in their driveway.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
I don't get off of the scene.
And we'll definitely thank you, I'll give you my cell number, and we'll make arrangements, so.
Yes, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
If you stay in touch with him, that's really all you need.
I know. Get back in our driveway, now it's going to see you.
Yeah, we have trees right there, we live right across the street from, from Michelle, it's going to hide a car.
Yeah.
So, what do you guys need to do?
Anything else? Uh, thank you, Bonnie, I can speak to the junior council program. Obviously, manor residents would have preference, but I'm not going to put it out twice, we're going to put it out. Any child that wants to get involved when we choose to do this, obviously, we're going to, we're going to take the, the manor resident first.
Am I allowed to call it back?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great, because when you were originally talking about it-
We actually said it when we originally talked about it.
Okay, I missed that then?
Yes.
But yes, okay.
The resolution was written differently, you actually amended it after me.
Yes, but we did talk about that at that meeting.
All right, thanks.
So, yeah, preference will be counted.
And can I address the bathroom part?
Yes.
I don't know if you were in a meeting, because to me, the meeting is just, it's just one big meeting anymore, right? But we did talk about an initial spot for the bathroom, which would be up by the handicap parking lot.
Yes.
If you remember, so we have had the discussion, and I agree, please give it up.
Well, but then tonight, you said, like, for Ed to go out with his tools and stuff, but, like, why isn't it being taken care of quicker?
Bonnie, can I add something to you?
I just got on it, first of the year, they've done a lot, and at this point, it, it has become one of those hot things now. We've got, uh, we've got four of them, that are things that really need to have a lot done for them, and for me, and I guess as you can tell- and I guess as you can tell, uh, our solicitor is trying to keep things tight so that you can get in time and operation for time. My reason for that is because we have so much to get off our plate.
Are you talking about the bathrooms?
I'm sorry?
Are you talking about the bathrooms? Because what does Chelsea have anything to do with the bathrooms?
Yes, it does. It does because, and with these last few months, there's been so much going on. There wasn't a ton, we've had to discuss it in meetings, but there hasn't been a lot of attention to it, parts being worked on. So undoubtedly, as I said, we talked about earlier, we are going to do whatever we can, but, you know, how, we have to get people in there, we need to get, we need to get estimates, we can work with the engineer to get those together. For, uh, for Dave and I, it's pretty much new, other than what we've discussed in the council meeting prior to that giving to us. So we are going to do that, and you know what we can do?
Dave was.
We can add you to, if you wanted to, that committee.
You've been on, Bonnie. You're the.
I'm the.
You're the.
We copy, we do, we copy them all, right? So can we put you on the committee too? You mean with us?
No.
Any other further comments? I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?